Call this meeting to order. George, could you take a roll?
Colonel Evans?
Here.
Mr. Grozan?
Here.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Nasa?
Here.
All present.
Stand for the pledge. Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm glad they haven't changed the pledge yet as they begin to rewrite history for us. District goals, we have three goals. Student achievement, financial prudence, and community engagement. Those are what every one of these, we talk about them at every meeting, I know it gets repetitive. But it is everything that's in this agenda for today will be working to achieve those goals. With that, I'll just move on. Recognition?
Thank you, Mr. Nasa. We do have one recognition. I'm gonna call Strongsville High School Assistant Principal Susan Harb up to the podium to present.
Good evening. I'm pleased to share with you a remarkable honor earned by Suraj Srinivasan, who will be a senior at Strongsville High School this year. Suraj attended the Intel International Science and Engineering Fair in Los Angeles in May 2017, representing our high school as well as our local fair, NeoSeF. At this fair, he had the opportunity to interact with approximately seventeen hundred other students from seventy-eight countries around the world. And he met scientists, engineers, Nobel laureates, and MacArthur fellows. Suraj won first prize in the category of biomedical engineering for his research relating to mosquito-inspired insertion and flexible microelectrodes. But I'll let him get into more details on that. Rising above a hundred other extremely talented students who submitted projects, he received $3,000 and the opportunity to name a minor planet as part of MIT Lincoln Lab. Over the summer, Suraj shared that he was currently working on improving the insertion system and implementing drug delivery methods for which he currently holds a provisional patent along with his mentor and P.I. And they are preparing a manuscript for publication. Suraj is a student to emulate. Congratulations. We are so proud of you and we look forward to hearing about your future accomplishments. Come on up, Suraj.
Wonderful work.
So you got a good case?
I don't know.
Not sure yet? You got a good biomedical injury?
She did my work there.
Yeah.
Did you?
Yeah, I did.
You've been through this gauntlet before, Suraj.
A few times. We're proud of her. We remember you and we respect you. Want to tell us a little bit about what you did?
So my research is titled "Mosquito Inspired Insertion Guide Prevents Flexible Intra-Cortical Microelectrodes From Buckling During Implantation." Now, that's a mouthful, but essentially what it boils down to is in the field of neural engineering, they use microelectrodes to interface with the brain for recording and stimulation. And they can improve the quality of life for spinal cord injury patients or those patients who don't have access, like quadriplegic patients. So the industry typically used rigid microelectrodes, but they're moving towards flexible substrates because they may offer advantages in terms of the inflammatory response. So my research focused on trying to eliminate the buckling of these flexible microelectrodes. So when they try to insert these electrodes, which only have the compliance of like a Ziploc bag, into the brain, they tend to buckle, which causes nuisance for the researchers as well as it can cause extra damage inside the brain. So when we look to nature, the mosquito inserts its fascicle, which is a thirty micron tube. Now, that's comparable to the diameter of a human hair. And it's able to get into our skin, which is relatively tough. And it would not be able to do that without the help of a bracing arm, which is called the labium inside the mosquito. So I applied the mechanics behind the mosquito bite to flexible microelectrodes. And then I demonstrated that the system I developed works in vitro with an AgarGel model and then as well as in vivo in a rat model.
Are you in high school? Like holy macro, that is like, you're like brilliant. We're so darn proud of you.
So I'd really like to thank the science department up at the high school for inspiring us to do research. I'd like to thank my mom, my dad, my parents, and then my mentors at Case Western, who helped guide me through this project. And then I look forward to, I've been in talks with the science teachers up at the high school about starting a science club and getting kids involved in more research 'cause oftentimes students and public school systems don't have access to the proper resources. I was fortunate enough to be able to work in a lab at a regulated resource institution. And kids at Hathaway Brown or Hawke and these private schools, they had these opportunities. So I'd like to inspire the next generation behind me to do more research and get involved 'cause it's a really gratifying experience.
You've inspired us.
We'll be sure to fund Ms. Vicki's Makerspace on steroids.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
Congratulations. Really.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
I don't think he should escape. It is a family affair, correct? Your sister's at Harvard?
She's doing her PhD. It's a joint program. So she does her engineering at MIT and then you do medicine at Harvard. And then you get like an interdisciplinary degree in medical engineering.
Did she help you at all with your project? Did you bounce ideas off of her?
So for my project, it was mainly led by my mentors at Case, but she helped me to like proofread my poster, proofread my abstract publication material, stuff like that.
Just for the record, her, his older sister is also a Strongsville graduate. She's currently at the Harvard Dual Program. And it's always fun if you're a geek and you happen to listen to Science Friday every once in a while, her sister, his sister will be on it. So it's nice to know that Strongsville is getting a much wider reach. But congratulations and we're very proud of you.
Suraj, I gotta tell you, I'm so impressed. Not just with the accomplishment, but you know, the research you're doing, the work you're doing, the look back to how can we improve our schools. That's all we all want to do all the time is improve. The one thing that I want to say to you is I've met a lot of very smart people that are not able to explain their work and their focus as clearly and understandably as you have. So that's a gift you have and use it for the betterment of all of us. So congratulations. And thank you, Ms. Harb, for the wonderful review of Suraj's work. Next, Mr. Nasa. Suraj, you don't have to stay after. We're gonna, please feel free to go home. Thank you for you and your mom to be here.
What we're gonna do here is so beneath what you're gonna do. We don't want to dull any of your senses with this.
So going on to the superintendent's reports of the community. I did ask, I'm gonna have Director of Curriculum Erin Green come up to the podium. One of the things that we took place in this building, in this room over the last week for the very first time in a long time was kindergarten screening program. So I wanted Erin to give a few updates about how that went in our first go-around and where we're going from here. So Erin?
Thank you. As Cameron said, this was our first attempt at having the kindergarten screening take place here in a central location prior to school starting and the kids getting screened during school. I wanted to highlight at the bottom here, we gave each student a sticker that said "I'm ready for kindergarten, class of 2030."
Oh my gosh.
So Dan had that idea. We printed it on Vicki's new large format printer and it was a huge success with the parents. I'm not sure the kids totally got it, but they wore their stickers with pride. So just really quick, by law, we have to screen students. And typically, we do that during the school day. When they're in kindergarten, we pull them out for hearing and speech and vision. We did that ahead of time. So what that allows us to do is get them in the classrooms more. We're not pulling the kids, we're not taking time away from instruction. And that's kind of why we decided to do this. Kindergarten teachers approached us and said, "Hey, would it be a possibility?" We looked into it and we feel it was really, really a great idea. Speech-language pathologists loved it. They know who now, now who they can work with, who their caseload is going to be. They don't have to spend time screening and finding that out and then not serving until weeks later. Teachers are gonna get a nice little snapshot of where each child is as they come in. We had them do, write their name, they had to say the letters in their name, count to ten, they had to color in a heart, jump up and down, cut on a straight line. And there's great variance in what the children are able to do. So the teacher will get that as well as what the screener wrote as far as what academic skills they were able to do. Last thing that we did that we thought was great, or I thought was great. We gave each parent a computer and they had to complete a survey. And what that survey was is a little bit more personal information about their children that the teachers actually got today. So what is your child like to do? What's, what do they like to be called? What interests and hobbies do they have? Anything you want us to know special about your child that will help him or her as they arrive on that first day. And teachers, I think they're really gonna enjoy that. It's more than a piece of paper and a name on a form. So I just wanted to share a couple pictures here. So you see here some of the vision and academics. And you see Laura Housam, of course, up in the corner, top left, volunteering her time. Couple more, the academic table, our speech-language pathologists. We had quite a crowd. At times, every seat in the house was taken and there was standing, room only. Couple more pictures. The staff did a phenomenal job. I do want to highlight, we actually had one of our teachers from Sarar, fifth grade teacher, just wanted to volunteer and give back. So she came and helped at the academic station. And the last set of pictures here.
Was it fun?
Oh my gosh, yes. I spent three days with the little ones. Really a good time. Overall, we ended up getting two-hundred-and-forty-seven students in the doors with their families in that three-and-a-half-day time span. So we have thirty-five left between the five buildings that need tested. So that's gonna really help with time and keeping the kids in the class. Some of them, our enrollment's a little bit higher. Those with special needs or who were retained, we didn't need to test those at this time. And lastly, just wanted to thank the PTA, who as we know gives effortlessly. They staffed the welcome table, they staffed the academic screening table, and they were really instrumental in making this happen. So I, something I'd like to see continue in the, in the future. I think it was well-received, all positive comments that I heard. I think Mr. Reba heard some positive ones as well. So we are happy to have that done and ready to go for the kids. Thanks.
I had a question. Did you also include all the myriad of forms that every parent always has to fill out at the start of the school year to get that knocked out for them as well? Or they still are gonna get a packet of forms?
I can tell you that.
Yeah, please.
Everybody registers online now.
Okay, good.
And so, and that continues year to year. So actually, when they did kindergarten registration back in March, they filled that all online.
So they are not gonna have to do anything else?
No more packets.
Wonderful.
And that's, that's for all of our kids too. All of our kids are on the online system for the registration materials and we update that as needed. And I know Erin won't say it when she's up here. But you know, big congratulations to Erin and Brenda and Joanna in her department. You know, the nerve-wracking piece about this is this is really our first oppression for our new families and new kindergartners. And you want it to work smoothly and everybody to feel comfortable. And it did. It was just a great time to come and talk with our parents and our kids. And so it was about as organized as it could be. I mean, it was a, it was a great flowing system. So congratulations to their department on putting that together. Next, we also had our first Makerspace camp going on at the same time. So Vicki's gonna come up and kind of share the highlights of how that went and where we're going with Makerspace.
Suraj wasn't there, was he?
He could teach.
Yeah, Mr. Miko was there as well, donating his time and helping out.
Mr. Miko donated about at least eight hours. Both days there with Fritz. Fritz was also a big help. We are going to recruit him. He's gonna be our new camp counselor. We also had a Makerspace for teachers last week. So this one's just highlighting our student Makerspace camp. So a lot of prep went into it. Tech Department has been very busy. We had stations. So I just kind of touch on each station. So Station 1 was green screen. Everybody went in, they got their picture taken, they picked their background, and then they had their name tags. Station 2 was our vinyl printer, our large format printer. You see Dwayne presenting to the students. They were very, very excited. They kept coming up all the way when it started printing and we'd be, step back a little bit. Station 3, we had 3D printing. So we printed some objects for them and then Dwayne explained the process. Making Making was Station 4. You see Mr. Brechner stepped in and was playing the potato piano there at the bottom right. Station 5 was our augmented reality sandbox. Pretty much every station was a hit. Wherever the kids were, that's what they enjoyed doing. Mr. Hamlik explained Raspberry Pi and then he and Mr. Miko geeked out for quite a while talking to the kids about that. And we had our Ozobot station, which was very, very popular. The one boy at the top right said, "I'm not leaving this station." I was like, "All right." Station 8 was animation. This was another very popular station where they were making their stop-motion animation. I did include Fritz's animation video. Hopefully this'll play. So yeah, we had a lot of videos. Little Bits Circuits was Station 9. And then Station 10 was our free play. I included this picture. Sue Luck was with us all three days. She volunteered, was there all four hours. I'd have to kick her out afterwards because she kept trying to help me clean up. But she got tired of me looking for my cellphone every time I set it down. So she made a duct tape cellphone carrier for me. The kids, we also found that every day, we had to go out and buy more duct tape. So duct tape was very popular. And just another close-up of our students. And then these are some of the people that, the companies that made it possible through their donations. And then we have our website with some other information.
Great job.
Any questions for Vicki or comments? All right, thank you, Vicki.
I just want to compliment Vicki on what a nice job she did. It's, it probably is obvious to everyone that the Makerspaces are important to me, but she hit it out of the park. The kids had fun. The one comment I will say is it's one of the few camps then that when Vicki said "It's time to take a break and go have a snack," they were all very perturbed and they were all, wanted to get the snack out of the way so they could get back to doing stuff. But more than once, I heard "Do we have to?" For taking a break and snacking. And more than once, the different participants wanted to know if they could do this all day.
Yeah.
And I'm like, "You're gonna have them in your elementary school." And they were, they were psyched. They were so thrilled to have it. So it's a, it's a great first effort and I can't wait to see it continue to grow and improve.
Absolutely. Thank you, Vicki. The last side of my hat is obviously just a reminder, I know most of our parents know, but our kids as well, that school starts next week. Tomorrow, Jenny will welcome all of our new teachers to the district with new teacher orientation in the morning. And then Monday, we'll kick off convocation at the high school at 8:30 a.m. with all of our staff. And then first through ninth grade starts on the 22nd and kindergarten. And 10 through 12 starts on the 23rd and preschool starts on the 28th. So we'll be a full go here in a little bit. And I just wanted to make mention, as this time of year I start to get a lot of questions, is just a reminder to the community that we develop our calendars two years at a time. This is the second year of our two-year cycle, so we do not have the 2018-19 calendar, 2019-20 calendar up yet. But that will be something that we will begin to look at and develop with the goal typically of having a calendar recommendation to the board somewhere around the first of the year. And with that, that concludes my reports of the community unless there's questions.
Yeah, I have a question. How many new teachers are we getting?
I believe around twenty. We have some that are filling in for other teachers, but I think I have about twenty coming tomorrow. And that includes a couple administrative positions too.
And just an input on the calendar. I think the closer we get to a Labor Day start and a late May, very early June finish, the better.
We'll share that with the committee, yeah?
A second.
Sticking with the thing, Richard, thank you for all your time that you put in. I know how busy you've been at work with everything that's going on there and to give a couple of days with your time, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That's excellent. We don't have any public comments that I'm aware of. One, one's done. Approval of minutes, we have the June 29th and July 10th minutes to approve. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Duke. Thanks, George, for the second. Any comments? George, could you take a roll?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent.
See that done flawless work.
That brings us to the treasures report.
Thank you, Mr. Nasa. I have a few, three items for your consideration tonight. The first is the financial report for the month ending June 30, 2017, which can be found in Exhibit A. As you recall, last board meeting, I presented the year-end wrap-up on how we finished the fiscal year. And then Exhibit B is the financial report for the month ending July 31, 2017, which is the first month of this fiscal year. With that, I have my monthly presentation. Let me go to the podium.
Okay.
So our general fund summary. For the month of July, our... We brought in $10 million worth of revenue and $5 million worth of expenses, which added us a net positive of $5 million. The revenues were slightly less for July compared to previous months. And that's primarily due to the real estate taxes, the way we work. We get our July, August, we get a first half, we get a second half for the calendar year settlement. And then in August, or in advance, and then the settlement comes in August. The settlement, the advance was half in July, but it was just a timing on the county. The rest of it came this month, the part that was short from July. We actually received it yesterday. Still haven't gone through it. It looks, it looks pretty similar to what we were expecting, but I still need to go through and reconcile to see what it was made up of. Other revenue, as you can see, it's slightly higher compared to the previous months for July. This is due for a few reasons. One is items that we were waiting for the state that should've came in June last month, but they should've came in June, but due to timing, they, we received in July. So that was carried over. And then $246,000 for the Great Escape settlement that we had voted on in July. And then workers' comp, we received $170,000 refund. I think the workers' comp fund in general was high and workers' comp gave refunds across the board. So we were able to receive a refund from workers' comp of $170 million, or $170,000. And then expenditures, they're tracking on target. Purchase services looks higher, but it's mainly due to timing of invoices. And same thing with other objects, it looks like it's $96,000 lower. That's just the insurance bill last year was paid in July, this year is paid in August. So just the timing. General fund revenues. In the May five-year forecast, we estimated about $7.7 million in general fund revenues for the 2018 school year. Through one month, we received $10 million with another $60.9 million to reach our target. I'm updating these, now I'm going through them as it's time to do the May five-year forecast. So as it's getting, or the October five-year forecast. So as we're getting closer to October, I'll update these numbers again. Revenues by category, other than the property taxes, the state foundation, it's coming in on target and other revenue was slightly higher due to the reason stated earlier. So, so far, the chart looks skewed, but it's, so far, the revenues are coming in on track. Same thing with expenditures. As you can see, salary, it's, it's pretty level compared to last year, slightly higher. The reason 2016 looked so high was, it was before, we had 25 pays in 2016. Now we're at 24 pays, which it's fully implemented. And in July, that fiscal year, we had three pays in July. Benefits is, it's level compared to last year. Purchase service and materials, it's, it's pretty consistent. And same thing with the other objects. Cash balance, began the fiscal year with $24 million in cash. We brought in $10 million, we expended $5 million. Our revenues over expenses are $5 million for this month. Our ending cash balance is $29.2 million, leaving us an unencumbered balance of $24.5. You can't see it, but there is a green dot representing 2018, which is at the, about the $29 million, which is almost, almost exactly to the starting point that we have. At, not starting point, at the ending point of July of last year. So with a red bar for July, there's a little green dot there. And then I just want to, just give an update on our student fees, how we did last year compared to this year. The summary of total outstanding fees, we finished the last school year with $70,992 in outstanding prior year fees. Of this amount, fifteen students are currently active on a payment plan that represents $3,108. And how that compares to previous fiscal years, at the, at the same point of last year, I use July 6 as a benchmark. But at July 6 of 2016, our outstanding fee balance was $99,369. July 6 of 2017, in comparison, we're $70,992. So the net, or the difference is about $28,000. So we're about 28% less that, we were able to, let me back up. We're 28% less for the same point in time comparing the two years. Last year was the first year we implemented our student fee collection policies where we withheld, we withheld students with prior fees from extracurricular activities that didn't pay, so we saw increased payments there. And then we also implemented a payment plan. And just to kind of give you a rap, summary on how the payment plan worked. Overall, we had during the, during the school year, we had about 101 students sign up for a payment plan. Of those 101 students, their total, their total outstanding balance, prior year balance was $37,000. Throughout the year, we collected $24,175 in total payments. And then of the, of the 101 students, 49 students completely paid it off through the payment plan. This year, there was some learning, there was some learning on the process on our end where we're looking to improve next year. In front of you, I have what we've been using for a student fee payment plan agreement. Just to, you can see as an example, we made some updates there. The updates that we did was, we changed the terms of the payment plan. We were kind of extending it to 12, 15 months. This school year, we want to limit it to, whenever they sign up to as many months were left in the school year so that they could finish it, so they can get it paid within the current school year. And limiting it up to nine months. So September to May is nine months. So that's how we came up with a nine-month figure. And then also, when they sign up, we want to enact that they sign up with a credit card and it's a monthly reoccurring bill. That way, we don't have to, one, they don't have to keep calling us every month. And then us not having to call them every month too if they have a kid, if they have a student playing sports or participating in extracurricular activities where sometimes it was close between the game time to when they, they paid. where sometimes it was, uh, um, close between the game time to when they, they paid, so we kind of want to alleviate those issues. So we were able to work with the credit card company to get the automatic payments. Uh, for those that don't have a credit card, uh, we'll work out other terms, uh, possibly, um, lessing the, the number of months that they pay so we can get a greater payment each time. And then also to that, I also want to give my secretary who's here, Dawn, a lot of credit. She's, uh, she's the one that's been tracking these, working with the families, getting them on, and, and, um, she's done a great job over the last year, so we've been working together to try and improve the process this year on both ends, on our end and on the family's end as well, to lessen the burden.
George, a question for you. Of thirty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars that's left, that is four years plus plus, how much of that thirty-five thousand is students that are gone? Can you give me a guess?
No, these are all students that are currently in the system.
Currently?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the, the four years plus plus is the purple box, which is the eighteen six twenty-eight.
Well, I apologize. So...
I know you're, you're, you're talking about the blue box, the thirty...
Agreed, but of the eighteen six twenty-sixth, then I apologize. I am a little colorblind, I apologize.
I know.
Um, how much of that is kids that are gone?
These are all current students.
Current students?
Yeah.
Okay.
We lost about, what's, we lost about, uh, they came off after this report, going into this, when it got rolled over to this school year, but about five to six thousand dollars for students that, um, that are gone.
Something that Richard had said at the last meeting kind of stuck with me, and Aaron's more directed towards you. I mean, I look at, we've got ten thousand two hundred and seventy dollars in workbook fees. I mean, I'm a small business guy, my insurance company does not use paper at all. Everything's email, everything's electronic, all signatures need to be done on an iPad. I know we're in our second year, but in two more years, every student at the high school will have their own Chromebook. It'd be interesting to see what that commitment, but also what are the possibilities of doing, maybe even in phases, of how do we get away from the paper? Because reality is, I'm an old man, I still use a legal pad and a pen, and that's how I do my task list, my notes, but the next generation's not going to do that. So that'd be real, just an interesting conversation for the future. Thank you, George.
Online workbooks.
Yeah, and the planner, too. Just go to all electronic planning.
Yeah, but a, again, it, it provides a great window, because now you've got sophomores and freshmen with Chromebooks. In two years, it's going to be all four years.
Right.
So what are our possibilities? I mean, it, we really can, we look at how much paper we've got on our desks right now. How can we reduce it? So, just a thought.
Chromebooks for the board.
Yeah, overall, um, I think we came a long ways, uh, with, with these, with the procedures in place, and I think word's getting out, and, um, it's being more proactive than reactive in collecting these fees, so we're hoping to improve each year on them, and with the changes that we made this year, hoping that, um, that seamless collection, but also alleviates some of the burden, uh, for families as well, because the reality, what happens is, when they get into high school, when it gets closer to graduate, the, as lo, the longer they went to pay their fees, then they have a bigger burden to pay post the graduation, so it's, it's not, we're trying to alleviate that before the student gets to that point.
I had a question about the, uh, new, the fee collection procedure. In here, it says that, um, the fees will be mailed the second week of the semester. Does that mean we're actually putting them in the rail mailboxes, and they're getting a paper statement, or is mail just...
For the second semester, it's, uh, it goes home with the student at the high school.
Okay, so it is a paper copy does go home for all the high school students. What about the middle school? How are they getting their fee notifications?
The middle school, it's, uh, it's at the start of the school year, the second semester included, uh, um, at the start of the school year. I think those are going home with the students as well. Dawn, do you know any different, are they mailed, or they go?
Um, I actually believe in this, the high school yails out the students.
Oh, do they?
Because it doesn't, when it goes home with the high school student, they'll...
It doesn't make it home, right.
So I believe that they actually do send those out via mail.
Mailing? Okay. Is the middle school the same?
Um, the middle school does, too. Now, last year, she didn't send them out, and she was going to mail them out this, beginning of this, um, or in the middle of the summer, she was supposed to mail them out each year.
Okay.
She did mail them out last year.
The challenge we have, the challenge we have is it's, it is all electronic, it's in the system, parents can see what their fees are. The problem is, is people are still so used to getting a bill, you know, so to speak, that, you know, to get that reminder, so I, I do remember some of the buildings tried to use their e-communications and their principal newsletters to say, hey, fees are uploaded, pay your fees, and the percentage that we were getting paid versus when they would give that hard copy home to say, here's your fees for the school year pay, was drastically different, so I do remember, that's why some of them went back to the paper.
You know, we have the pay-as-you-go system, or pay, what's the system?
Pay for it.
Pay for it?
Mm-hmm.
Pay for it system? And I know that mine automatically renews off, for my daughters, it, it renews off my credit card, whenever it gets to a certain level, it just...
For the food service program.
For the food service program. Any way to link the fees into that program?
They are linked in there.
They are.
But I mean, you could, you could pay it what you're paid for, you could just...
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you, you can't do an automated payment. It would be, you know, for the food service, you could say, hey, when my balance gets to five dollars, get up to seventy-five.
Yeah, but can, how does it work for the fees?
The fees, it's just an input bill when...
It's, it's in there, but it's a different module that they have.
But can, you can pay it with that?
You can pay, yeah, you can pay it in the pay for it, in the pay for it system.
My two cents, wouldn't it be, wouldn't it behoove us that the first week, and then second week and third week of school, we can just send a blast email out to all parents, including the paper copy, because there are still some parents that will just want a paper copy, write a paper check.
Jenny's saying we do.
We do?
That's what we're doing, yeah.
Okay, great.
I have a suggestion, instead of a letter, send them a postcard, it'll save us some money.
Well, wait.
Send a postcard that says, your students' fees are now due, you can even put the total amount down, not, not break it out. Said, if you'd like a delineation, go to the website, but you owe X amount, send it in.
We'll look into it, see if...
A lot less than, than the letter.
If we have the capabilities. And then on the last slide, it's just a, I'm not going to go over, but it's a breakout there, that you could, that you could see what's, uh, how it's broken down. Um, that, that concludes the presentation, if there's any questions.
Great job, George.
Yeah, George, I think you did really good this year. You and Cameron put that policy together, and we made great strides in it. We'd love to be able to pay for everything the kids use, but we just don't have that kind of money from the taxpayers, and it's not fair in a way, because kids do different things, and so their, their amount of money that they use up, the, the resources are different. Um, but twenty-eight percent is great, I'd like to see another fifty percent this year, and you know I was pretty much a thorn in your side all last year about this, but, uh, keep after it.
He feels it.
Yes. Dawn, if you could get this fixed, I'd appreciate it.
And I, and I would say, Colonel Evans, that, you know, this is just, uh, an estimate, but I do believe that of all the five years I've been in these positions, this is the lowest our fees have been ever, and that's to Aaron's work with the teachers of really getting down to the bare minimum of what consumables do we need, um, and I think it's a pretty fair rate in school, in terms of school fees.
All right. Now, that brings us to the, um, OSBA Capital Conference Delegate.
Yeah, so, um, so as you mentioned, this is for the Capital Conference Delegate for November twelfth, thirteen, fourteen. Um, we need a delegate and alternate. Past few years, the delegate's been Mr. Miko, so I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Neso, Dawn.
Do we have a volunteer?
Can I nominate, Mr. Miko?
Well, first, we need to make a motion. George made the first motion.
I'll second that.
Duke made the second motion. Um, any discussion, okay, who would we like to nominate?
Um, I nominate Richard Miko.
All in favor? No? Is that how that works? Would you accept the nomination?
I will accept the nomination, and I will, I will remind, uh, certain board members, if not all of them, that there was a, uh, a quid pro quo promise for, uh, the Polaris, uh, delegate or Poler, uh, the person that we send to Polaris. I believe, uh, I believe I'm interested in Duke's, uh, offer of one for the other. Huh?
Oh.
How quickly forget.
I thought it was if we nominated you, you would buy us adult beverages.
Nah, something like that. I don't remember any offer. I was going to say, if Richard doesn't want to go, let's just not send anybody.
Richard, we accept.
OSBA is a pretty useless organization.
Do we have an alternate?
I nominate Carl.
I'll be the alternate. I accept.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Grozen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Absolutely.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
And just, so you guys are aware, the conference is open to all board members, if anyone's interested as well. Uh, the delegate is just for the meeting that they have, the delegates meeting, so if anyone's interested in the meeting...
What day is that?
I think it's like a...
It's a Sunday, Monday, Tuesday is the conference.
They shortened the conference this year, it used to be four days, and now it's three days.
Do you go all three days?
Um, no. I go, I make sure to go to the business meeting, and then usually I see, uh, what presentations we have from Strongsville, and this year, I'm happy that we're going to have some presentations from people from Polaris, and those are the days I go.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
We can just one day at sleep, um...
And that concludes my report. All right, thank you. Um, Cameron, timely?
Uh, under timely information, um, we had a retreat last Thursday, thanks again to the board members and all of our administrative team for being there for a great discussion, um, finalizing our two thousand twenty plan for the next school year. Uh, Mr. Neso, the mission, the core beliefs and the seventeen, eighteen school year district goals are the same as last year, however, as we talk, the objectives and action steps under those goals have changed, and probably by next meeting, I'll be able to share that finalized plan. Um, so our mission, beliefs and goals are up for the board's consideration tonight.
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion? I know we discussed them quite a bit at the, the retreat, any discussion? Um, George, could you take role?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, I'd like to bring up Steve Brechner, Operations Manager, with the Business Service Report for the Month. Steve?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, there's a couple items for your consideration on the agenda for tonight from, uh, Business Services. The first item is the, um, Bus Bid Award. Uh, the resolution will be that we purchase five buses, um, at the cost from the, sorry, Cardinal Bus Sales and Services, uh, we're going to be purchasing five seventy-two passenger buses, um, for four thousand, four hundred, twenty-eight thousand and seventy-five dollars, and, uh, listed in Exhibit C. Uh, just to give you some insight on, on how we arrived at this, uh, for your consideration, traditionally, we've purchased sixty-five passenger buses, but when we, um, met as a team, that consists of Lori Sinek, uh, Chuck Patton, and Chad Tucker, um, we decided we wanted to move forward and, and for your consideration, move to a seventy-two bus fleet, start the process of buying some larger buses. The reason for that is to increase efficiency on bus routes, putting more butts in the seats every time we pull out of the, uh, parking lot, so we can have more students in one bus, uh, so that way, we can reduce the size of the overall fleet once we turn the entire fleet over. Um, it's also the industry standard, seventy-two or seventy-eight bus, uh, passenger buses. Uh, the reason why we're not doing seventy-eight, we can't fit them into our bus garage for any kind of maintenance. Uh, we could pull it in, but, um, the back end would be hanging out of the, of the, uh, of the bay if we needed to work on the engine, so it's just not feasible. And also, with some of our streets being a little bit more narrow, going around cul-de-sacs, the seventy-eight passenger buses, uh, would not be easily maneuverable through those areas. But the seventy-two bus passengers, sorry, the seventy-two passenger buses, um, do allow us to have that efficiency that we're looking for, and eventually reduce the overall buses that we have in our fleet. Also, we were able to get, uh, storage containers on our buses in this proposal, uh, you can see that in Exhibit C. The reason for that is not only for, um, storing equipment on field trips, but also storing equipment when we send our sports teams. Instead of having to, to provide another bus and another driver, we're able to use the storage compartments that are underneath the seats, um, and be more efficient in that way as well. Um, you'll see the price listed there is four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, as I said. This is the, the least amount that we've brought for your recommendation. In two thousand thirteen, it was four hundred and thirty-one thousand and some change. Uh, last year, four hundred and forty-three thousand and some change. Uh, I have those purchase orders here. Um, again, not sixty-five, but seventy-two. Now, how we were able to accomplish that is through teamwork, we figured out what were our need-to-haves and what were our want-to-haves, and what we found was that our want-to-haves were causing us to have the most maintenance issues, so we eliminated some of those want-to-haves. The price came down, and we're now able to purchase buses that accommodate more passengers for less money than we've spent in the past five years for five buses. So...
Can you give an example of one of those?
I'm sorry?
Can you give us an example of one of the things you took out?
Um, there was a radio that was in there that was causing havoc with our radio going to and from the base. Um, another one was a heated driver's seat, um, that would break and, uh, was causing a lot of maintenance issues. Um, so those are just a couple of examples, and again, that was through input from the whole team of going through the data and saying, this is where our maintenance is going, and these are things we don't necessarily need to make the bus safe, to make the bus comfortable for the students, and, and to have, uh, a functioning fleet of buses.
Excellent, great work. Also, great catch on the size of the bus. I've worked with companies that have ordered equipment, then they find out that they have problems like that, so, uh, good work.
Well, like I said, it was a team effort, it, um, it's in Exhibit C for you, and, and it does need a motion.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion on the buses?
No, I just questioned the radio, they'll still have two-way contact with the base.
Yeah, that's actually what we prioritized over serious.
So we just took out the entertainment radio?
Yes, that's correct.
Excellent, okay. That's all, Mr. Neso, from me.
Thank you. Uh, George, could you take role?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, the second item for consideration is a lease agreement between the Strongsville City School District Board of Education and the Cleveland Football Club. Um, they will be leasing, um, for your consideration, the property formerly known as Albion Middle School, and it will be the athletic fields that are there now. Um, that lease agreement is in there as Exhibit D, and I would love to give you more details, but Mr. Riva worked that, uh, agreement out, so I won't speak for him.
Um, obviously, we've had a great partnership with the Cleveland Football Club through their donation to the Excellence in Athletics, um, and as we know, the Strongsville Youth Lacrosse, uh, group is, um, using the former Albion Field, um, but as they've gone through one year, they've used, they use that during the spring and spring only, so we have a great property that's, uh, sitting vacant for most of the year. The Cleveland Football Club is in need of additional, um, uh, practice fields, and what they have offered, uh, i, in, in part of this agreement is in, in the lease agreement, is full, uh, care and maintenance of the property, which is, uh, a large property and a significant, um, benefit for the district, so in turn, for their use of the fields, uh, the, the lease agreement does say, uh, Strongsville Lacrosse has priority use of that. Uh, Strongsville Lacrosse has been contacted, I've worked with them, they are completely Uh, Strongsville Lacrosse has been contacted. I've worked with them. They are completely supportive of uh, the agreement that's set forth before you. Um, and again, uh, the maintenance of that property with the use for soccer and lacrosse and Cleveland Football Club taking over that would be a great benefit to the district.
Excellent.
Mr. Neso?
Whoop, we need a motion first.
Okay.
So moved.
Thank you Duke. Second?
Second.
Thank you Jane. George?
Mr. Neso, if I could, I need to abstain. Uh, my son William plays for CFC Cleveland Football Club. Um, but I would, I would like to say is on Tuesday, when I took him over there to um, to practice. It was interesting because we had seven or eight taxpayers running the track. Um, we had probably a hundred, hundred and ten soccer players in various parts of the property playing soccer. And it was just nice to see that, oh, and we had one mom teaching her daughter how to parallel park with both her cones. So the property's being used. We even saw some of the firemen. They were out on the track using it. Um, the property's being used and being maintained. There's not a scrap of trash anywhere. Everything's trimmed and cut. Um, but again, I do need to abstain because my son does play for Cleveland Football Club.
Okay.
Yeah, I have one correction. It's the football club. It's not a football club.
Football.
Football.
Football, that's right.
So.
Duly noted.
Duly noted. Um, George, you wanna take role?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozen?
Abstain.
Motion passes. Four oh, one abstain.
Action. That's a great use of that property right now. I mean, between lacrosse and, and football.
Yeah.
They're uh, it's, it looks nice. I mean, it's well cut, well maintained.
You know, actually, we have the, the track at the middle school, in the field at the middle school is also getting some use. Every time I go past there, there's always two, three, or four or more cars parked there. So it's great, great opportunity for the people in our community to take advantage of those, of those areas.
Yeah?
Both properties.
Of both properties.
If you do drive by and you see my car there and it's there for too long, I've been running up there, so it's possible that I've collapsed. And uh, just drive by and just see if I'm upright.
Uh, the, uh, the next item for consideration on the agenda is a security contract addendum. And it's uh, it changes the uh, not only the rate, but also the number of hours that we're gonna be paying the security company that uh patrols our high school parking lot. Uh, we're reducing the rate from last year. We had fifty-five uh person hours. Going to forty this year and it's a reduction of uh, a hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents per week. For the school year. Um, the reason for that is uh, and you guys know, my former job, I was all about the parking. So um, w- we used to have to number the lot because we had so many students who wanted to drive. With the increase of some programs that allow flexibility in the daily schedule of students, we had a lot of turnover. And now we went to a color coding system at the high school. By doing that, we reduced the amount of time that it took to audit the lot. We reduced the amount of tickets being off, that are being um, given to students who are parked illegally. Because now it's first some, first serve parking in those designated areas. With that reduction of uh, the audit time, we no longer need the second guard that's been there. So his name is Mike Bickelmeier. Every, every student knows him because he always wishes him a great Mustang Day. He'll be with us. Um, we're gonna be moving Mike from that crosswalk up to the bus lane, so he can keep cars out of the bus lane. And what we're gonna do is change the traffic pattern a little bit at the high school, where if you come in through the Lund Road Loop, you have to go out Lund Road. You cannot cut over to Radamaker and out to Pearl Road that way. We're gonna be blockading that and creating a very safe crosswalk for our students who are coming down from the upper parking lot. Um, I've already talked to Mike and we're gonna be able to get that set up every morning. Get students into the school safely from that parking lot and then we will tear that down and that an- access will be open again when school does start. But again, an overall reduction in cost and we haven't been able to, we have been able to increase safety for the students on that crosswalk coming from the upper parking lot. So that item is there for your consideration as Exhibit E.
Excellent. I- in, in that same uh idea, could you, I, when, when, I know during like football games and other events, people, as opposed to parking in the parking lots, park on the grass there, right? There's, so there's always cars on the grass there. One, I think, one, it tears up the grass. And two, it's lazy. Like, just go to the parking lot, park your car and walk down. Um, three, I think it's unsafe because if, if it's just a, to me, it's a security risk to have cars that close. People could be in those cars that we don't know. And they're that close to our students, they're that close to the facilities. Um, I just would like to find a way to stop that. I don't know if we have to have policemen come in there and write tickets or what we have to do, but I don't want anybody parking in there anymore. And I don't, that's just me. Cameron, you guys talk about it, but it's just, it's tearing up the grass. And especially on muddy days, football games and stuff, I don't want anybody in there. I don't want anybody behind the stadium on that back lot either, behind the football field. I mean, the, the cars should be where the cars should be. And um, so if, if there's any way to do that, I think would be, you know, I'm sure people would be angry like, what, I can't park on the grass anymore? No. I don't park on your tree lawn. I don't park on your lawn. Get off of my grass with your car and your truck and go for a walk. Um, so think about that and.
The, the.
You don't go to Blossom, huh?
I just, I do go to Blossom. No, actually, I don't go to Blossom because parking's a pain in the butt. I'm, I'm stopped. I wish they'd, concerts would go somewhere else because you can't get in and out of that mess.
We could definitely take a look at the, the grass area outside of the stadium. I would say that the back of the stadium there, that's staff that parks there.
Yeah, they can walk too. They got legs. They get feet.
They do, but that's where they work from and so.
Okay, alright, so maybe that's where they are, but okay, okay.
Uh, you know, that, that one is, is our, is our athletic custodians and athletic director and those are all staff.
Okay, I didn't know who parked back there. I just saw cars back there.
Um, but the other, the other grass, absolutely.
And, and, and it's a bit of a safety issue because if you've got young kids who don't have, haven't spent that much time behind the wheel and they're backing up now and they're trying to get out, I mean, you could have potential of an issue or a problem.
Don't think about it. I know you can solve. If anybody can, you can.
Add it to the to-do list, Steve.
I already wrote it down.
On the security guard for the middle school. Where are we on that?
I haven't, I've gotta set up a meeting with the chief to talk with him, so that's on the to-do list once we get school up and running.
Okay, that's next week.
After next week.
After next week.
Let me get, let me get through the first week of school.
Okay.
And to be clear, this is a security guard that we hire with third party. This is not our school SRO.
No, I, I understand, but it just cued me because it said security. It's the magic word, so.
Yeah, okay.
And especially in light of events in the world, we cannot be too careful.
Okay, let's get through item three. I, I got us off target. I apologize.
So moved.
Thank you for the motion. A second?
Second.
Thank you, George. Any further discussion? Nice job on that. I mean, good.
I was just gonna make a request, uh, changing the traffic pattern for parents. Obviously, you're gonna have parents who are gonna find out the first day of school. But anything we can do to email blast them, uh, get it on the website or what have you, that's gonna affect a lot of uh, patterns and a lot of habits. Um, that's it. Thank you.
Good idea.
And Mr. Smithberger is gonna put that in his opening update to parents.
It'd be good to have a sign up there too, right, at the start of Radamaker that says this exit is closed.
No more right turns.
You know, mornings seven, six forty-five to eight thirty, whatever it is.
Okay.
Excellent. Um, George, you wanna take role on this? Unless somebody has any other comments?
Colonel Evans?
Yo, who me? Yes.
Mr. Grozen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, the fourth item on the agenda from Business Services for your consideration is uh, transportation for non-public students. And uh, this is the resolution that uh, is found in Exhibit F. This is for students who are not attending um, Strongsville City Schools. And we're providing um, transportation for those students. This includes the cost of providing transportation in terms of equipment, maintenance, personnel, and administration. And the additional service unavoidably disrupts current transportation schedules. Um, so the resolution is there for you that we're providing in, in lieu of payment to those families. So that uh, they can provide transportation for their students.
Excellent.
Or for their children.
Any questions for Steve?
No, I just wanna point out that, you know, we, we talk about our, our three goals, right? We've got student achievement, financial prudence, all four of your items, right? So the bus bids, one, we got buses for lower than we've ever paid for five buses. But in addition, they're bigger buses. So they're gonna haul more kids and there's a, there's a, there's a significant savings number to that, right? You might be able to take, you know, uh, you know, half a bus out of the, out of the deal just with that, right? Um, the lacrosse item on there, someone else is gonna cut our grass for us and all we're doing is letting them play football, football. And um, and then the third item, the security thing, that's about eight thousand dollars a year, a hundred ninety-seven dollars a week for I don't know how many weeks we're in school, maybe forty or so, but um, so I mean, that's another eight thousand dollars. Nice work. Thank you. You've, you, you know?
Well, it's never done in a vacuum. I have.
Oh, I, I know, I know. I mean, take that back to your team and all the people you talk to, but we greatly appreciate what you brought us today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next up, we have Director of Curriculum, Aaron Green, with his report for this month. Aaron?
And sticking with the theme of saving money and reduced fees, I have three items tonight for you. Um, the first one is just a correction to the fee um, on the agenda for June twenty-ninth. We had a reduction, we will have a reduction of five dollars and twenty-four cents for the grade seven phys ed fee. Um, we are not purchasing the personalized heart monitor straps this year. So the corrected fee is six dollars and that will be reflected on the fee statements. Item two, recommendation to enter into an inter-district service contract with the Educational Service Center of Cuyahoga County. Um, as shown in Exhibit G. And that is where we contract to get some specialized services that um, saves us money for not hiring them on our own. And lastly, item three, student teacher agreement. This allows a partnership between Ursuline College and our school district for placement of student teachers, um, for field experience and methods courses, et cetera. Questions on any of those things? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Nice.
Next up, we have Andy Trigio, Director of Student Services, with his report for this month. Andy?
Good evening, members of the board. I have first on the agenda for your consideration, um, Kids Link Neuro Behavioral Center has three contracts for three students that are currently receiving services and attending school there. That's seen in Exhibit I. Number two, we have Lorraine County Interagency Agreement. Um, that these agreements uh, through the counties, Lorraine, and next month I'll have Cuyahoga County ready for you. That one's been delayed. But these are, this is an implementation of a comprehensive service delivery system for families with children through birth, through enrollment, through kindergarten. It's an effort to collaborate all efforts of all the agencies within the county. That's seen in Exhibit J. Third is educational alternative student transportation agreement. Um, that is um, provides us another opportunity to get students that need to attend educational alternatives there. Uh, gives us another uh, competing rate for transportation and um, provides additional options for some students that need that. Next page, item four is Applewood Centers. I'd like to recommend to the Board of Education that you entertain an agreement with Applewood Centers for operating an educational institution known as the Gerson School for placement of students with disabilities. At the rate of thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars per student. We currently have three students that attend Gerson. Number five is for Monarch School, which is on the east side of Cleveland. And we have two students there and that is their contract and their rate of seventy-eight thousand per student. And lastly, the Educational Service Center of Cuyahoga County, two items for them. The first being that they help provide specialists for us and staffing for students with visual, audiology, and hearing impaired services. And then, secondly, we have um, the Educational Service Center has entered into a partner, partnership with Capsc- Capstone Academy. Um, that happened at toward the end, end of last school year, in the summer. We have one student there. And that item is in Exhibit N. Okay? Any questions?
Yeah, Andy, how much of, if any of this is paid for on the state funds?
General funding.
Um, I'd have to get you a breakdown. Um, it depends on the student. We get, as, as part of our funding formula, we get a portion back. And then at the end, we can do what's called catastrophic aid. And we get about a hundred and fifty, last year we got about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars back in catastrophic aid um, reimbursements.
That's a small percentage of what it costs us though, right?
Right.
So another example of mandates from Columbus without any following funding.
Are, are these rates that we pay, like, the seventy-five we have here? I mean, who negotiates those? I mean, are those just take them or leave them or is they, I mean, do we, do we go there and say, listen, we'll give you, I mean, like, when I go to buy shoes?
That is their, that is our tuition rate.
Yeah?
So if you don't wanna pay that rate, the student doesn't go to school there.
Yeah, there's no.
No choice.
No negotiation, huh?
Yeah. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Andy. And next, we have Assistant Superintendent Jenny Pelco with the Human Resource Report for the month.
Good evening. Under Human Resources, I have the following recommendations for your approval. Under E one, I have one non-certificated resignation. I also have resignations of non-certificated supplementals.
The one on, on, let's stop with E one for a second.
Okay.
The loss of Daniel Collins as our assistant boy, I know that, I know there's multiple reasons going into that. But the loss of him in our boys' soccer program is huge, I think. And that program needs help. And so losing him makes it even more troubled. So just pointing that out.
Under E two, I have the following appointments for certificated substitutes. That continues with, and then season of hiring our subs. Under uh, continued under E two, the appointments of non-certificated substitutes. Uh, one appointment of a certificated supplemental contract. Of the appointment of a non-certificated supplemental contract. And appointments for certificated supplemental contracts paid upon completion. And appointments of non-certificated supplemental contracts paid upon completion. Under E three, uh, some changes in status for non-certificated staff. Under E four, we have stipends for our certificated uh, two more speech-language pathologists to help with our kindergarten screening. Stipends for our certificated staff for our auditorium, stage, and lighting crew. Stipends for our certificated uh, student services for assessing incoming students. One stipend for a non-certificated staff member for extended school year. Stipends for our student services department uh, that were attending uh, registered behavioral technician meetings for autism spectrum classrooms this year. Under E five, and two salary upgradings for certificated staff. Under E six, two medical leaves for certificated staff and several for non-certificated staff. And continued under E six, one unpaid medical leave for certificated staff and a few unpaid medical leaves for non-certificated staff. And that concludes my report unless anybody has any questions.
And we have no items under technology, so that concludes my report.
Thank you. The only thing I'd say is the, this, the use of substitutes, we need to work to get that, that amount down. And I don't know, there's two, two ways to do it and I'd, I'd love to see, you know, something, some, an effort to do our best with that.
Sure.
Alright, nothing on our technologies. That brings us to a report on Polaris.
Thank you, Mr. Neso. Uh, just a quick report on Polaris. Just like in Strongsville, Polaris is uh, gonna start back up uh, with the school year on Monday. Uh, they'll be welcoming students again and we're looking forward to a great year. Uh, the adult program is also getting underway, so if there are any adult learners out that are, out there that are looking for a new career or new training, uh, now is the time to uh, get in touch with Polaris, whether it's a medical program, uh, some of their advanced manufacturing programs, their welding programs. Uh, just as many uh, adult programs as high school programs and it's a great place to uh, learn new skills and uh, perhaps get some uh, uh, increased career training. And that completes that report.
Thank you. Wanna move on to legislation?
I do. Uh, another quick report. Uh, things are kinda quiet now that the budget is over, but uh, the legislature is meeting next week uh, to discuss vetoes and attempting to vetoes, uh, I'm sorry, attempting to override some of Governor Kasich's vetoes from uh, this current budget. So now is a great time to remind all your legislators, legislators, uh, uh, Mr. Patton and uh, Mr. Dolan that uh, we'd like them to override the TPP veto. That concludes my report.
Thank you. That brings us to Board Liaison Report. City Council?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Neso. City Council has been on um, hiatus this month of August, so there were no meetings. The next meeting will be September seventh, the Tuesday after Labor Day. So, um, it's at eight o'clock. They're televised if anybody's interested in watching them or I will report on them myself.
Thank you. How about PTA?
Uh, PTA again, has not gotten underway yet, um, but I encourage everyone to join PTA and um, just give your support. Whether it be, you know, attending room parties as an elementary parent or helping with kindergarten screening or being on any of the committees in the district, like the curriculum committee, textbook committee, or um, just to stay involved. And you don't have to have students in the district to be in PTA. They welcome grandparents as well. Um, so just check your school calendars for uh, when your meeting times and places are and don't forget to attend open house. So um, I'm sure all those are on their uh, school calendars as well, so.
Excellent. How about student achievement?
Well, we had a prime example of student achievement here earlier, but um, I look forward to reporting on all of our um, various uh, schools and their achievement throughout the year.
Thank you. Strongsville Education Foundation, I know they are starting uh, in earnest. Strongsville Education Foundation, I know they are starting in earnest with their car raffle, and they had a, a meeting just this week, I believe, right? A telephone conference?
They had a telephone conference this week, just as a correction. The Athletic Boosters have taken over the car raffle.
Oh, okay.
So, they are leading that, and I believe tickets were distributed about a week ago.
This week, and when we get to Board Other, I'll be talking about it.
But I would like to, there was a phone conference last week. I would like to publicly thank the foundation. We recently received, it was twenty thousand, right, Vicki? A twenty thousand dollar grant from the foundation, another one for our Makerspace, and we have received the full check to pay for all the district field trips.
Great.
That are going to be put on this school year that Erin and her department has organized. So, you know, just in the last month, the foundation has donated over thirty thousand dollars to the school district, and we'll recognize them accordingly here shortly.
Excellent. Wow, that's great. To know the field trips are fully funded.
Yeah.
That's great news.
It's amazing. I think there won't be any monuments for them to look at, but you can go watch them.
They can look at old photos.
Yeah.
Finance Committee, no meeting policy?
We, we did not have a meeting. We will talk about our, the second reading when we get there.
Facilities Committee meeting is next week?
Next, yeah, the twenty-fourth?
Yep.
Here at the administrative building, right?
Consent calendar. That brings us to all items with an asterisk are approved in one vote. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you for all your motions today, Duke.
You're welcome. You moved me.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, George.
Thanks for all your seconds today, George.
Any discussion? We don't have any adjustments to anything, so we can just vote. Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Grozine?
Yes.
Mr. Ludwick?
Yes.
Mr. Niso?
Yes.
Motion passes. Excellent. That brings us to item sixteen, second reading of the wellness policy. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, George. Any discussion?
Mr. Niso?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we table it. We still have some issues to discuss and go through. Talking with Jane, she has, she indicated to me three issues that she wanted to discuss. I had two issues that I wanted to discuss. So, if it would please the Board, I'd like to table it for today and send it back to Policy Committee where we can vet it a little more thoroughly and then bring it back to the Board as a whole.
Okay. George, how do we do that?
So, since there was a motion made already in the second, we need a, a motion and a second and a vote to table it. So, the vote would be to table the item that's on the agenda.
Okay. Do we have a motion to table?
So moved.
Thank you, George. Have a second. We have a second.
Who was the second?
George.
George was the...
Duke.
One of the two. Okay.
Do we have a vote?
Yep.
This is a vote to table.
Yes. Congratulations, a vote to table. Mr. Grozine?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwick?
Yes.
Mr. Niso?
Yes.
Motion's tabled, and we'll bring it back after.
We have our next policy meeting on August thirty-first, so we'll be, I'll add that to the agenda for the Policy Committee.
All right. That brings us to Board of Education Other. I have a few, and Richard has another.
I have another, and I wanted to just let everyone know that, as Mr. Reba mentioned, the Strongsville Athletic Boosters are sponsoring our car raffle this year. It is a two thousand seventeen Chevy Trax. I want to be very clear that it's a two thousand seventeen Chevy Trax. It's a fun car. It's an exciting car. It has Wi-Fi inside the car, which everybody thought was very cool. Tickets this year are twenty dollars each, and there are only three thousand tickets that are going to be sold. So, somewhat like Willy Wonka's golden ticket, there's only three thousand tickets. That's all there ever will be. So, if you want to win a Chevy Trax, you should buy your ticket early and often. Tickets will be sold by various student athletes throughout the community, at various open houses, different functions throughout the, throughout the Strongsville community. And they'll also be sold at the Strongsville Middle School and at the high school through the athletic office, through Andy. You can get your tickets there. The, the raffle will benefit both the Excellence in Athletics campaign, which is our turf at the high school and the middle school, and it'll also benefit our Strongsville Athletic Boosters, which ultimately means it'll benefit our athletes. Everything that the Athletic Boosters, all the funds they raise go back to the athletic programs in one way or the other. So, it's a great cause. It's a great car. The car will be parked in front of the middle school, so if you want to check it out, please do so. And once you see how awesome it is, you know, make sure to buy one, two, three, or three thousand tickets. And that concludes my report. Oh, and the raffle will be, help me, Cameron, which, what's the day of the football game? It's the last football game of the season?
I will get that after the next other.
Last home game, right?
Well, it's the last home game of the season.
Mr. Niso, if I could, my mom always taught me it's about the small things, the small things. So, my daughter had Mrs. Delancey last year, and I received a text today from Mrs. Delancey just to say wishing my former firsties, sniff sniff, a super second grade year. That's just the quality of people that we have inside of our buildings to take the time and take the moment to be able to say, "Hope our little first graders move into second grade and have a, a great year." So, just an example of a great teacher who started here and now is over at Kinsman. That's it.
I just want to mention that Mr. Serpentine donated that, that super cool Chevy Tracker, and he continues with his support of our schools, both on the Excellence in Athletics, where we named the, donated essentially the turf.
Right, right.
And we greatly appreciate it, but he's continuing that, and we just want to thank him for that. I also want to mention that the sponsorship of the middle school is still open, and if you have a business in Strongsville and you want your name all over that, that beautiful middle school, you should drive by it, take a look, see how many people are there all the time. It's an excellent opportunity for a long-term commitment and a long-term marketing play at that field. It's beautiful, and we're looking forward to someone coming by and taking advantage of that, that spot.
I have another, if I'm allowed.
Absolutely, your second other.
Okay, yeah, we don't want to keep it as Blank Field, so, unless Mr. Blank buys it.
Exactly.
So, just a caution to everybody, I guess, but mostly to our teachers, staff. The big eclipse is on Monday, and the weather's supposed to be pretty nice, and I know there'll be temptation to take the kids outside to see a once-in-a-lifetime experience, but just keep in mind that retina burns are forever. And so, if you don't have, and there's a lot of scams out there right now for the proper glasses that you need to watch it, watch it on the internet, watch it on the TV, wait for the astronomers to put out the, the things, because if you, you look up the wrong time, you could cause yourself permanent vision damage. So, just a caution.
All right. We have one other.
We have one more other. And this one's just a congratulations and a shout-out. We had two Strongsville alumni try out for the best dang, dang band in the land for the Ohio State University Marching Band, Todd Anders, the Ohio State University Marching Band.
Thank you, Jane.
Todd Anderson and Sidney Reich both tried out, and they both are now members, the newest members of the Ohio State University Marching Band. So, congratulations to them.
That's great.
And Mr. Miko, the last home football game is Friday, October twentieth.
Thank you very much.
Meeting closes. We have another meeting. Our next meeting will be September seventh, right here, followed by one on September twenty-first, right here. No.
Mm-mm.
Someone's tricking me.